We're going to continue with our Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee. Our Chair of that committee is Ms. Elizabeth Schultz, and she is going to provide recommendations or offer recommendations on how we will refocus the work of this committee. Ms. Schultz.
So, this is a reordering of the agenda. I appreciate the Chair giving me the microphone for this, but I do fundamentally disagree, I think, out of respect for the people who are here, to whom we advertise this as a 6 o'clock agenda item. Whether we have audio or not for the hall, I vehemently protest on their behalf that we are not respecting their time.[48.12][48.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, but there is an equal number of people out in the hallway, and if you would proceed with the discussion.
I understand that, but it is, we have a responsibility to authentically engage the public, and when we advertise something on an agenda that is, that involves members of our community, in the past, when we've had members of the community here, we have actually altered the agenda in order to accommodate and make sure that we are respectful to them, that these are their schools, we are representing them, it is their money. So, I will proceed, but I am proceeding under protest because I don't think this is fair to all the people who have been sitting here for now an hour and 40 minutes for an agenda item that was supposed to start 40 minutes ago. So, with that being said, (APPLAUSE), with that being said, because there are so many people here, I am going to explain what this committee is and what happened before I present the recommendations, so that they understand. The Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee was originally established, basically, as a shell committee, and its only job previously was to vet the resumes for the committee that, a report that we just saw presented to us. So, that's a committee where we try to get, for Facilities Planning Advisory, where we try to get qualified people who have competent cognizant backgrounds that help the facilities and planning recommendations. And so, CPDC would gather together, review their resumes, and make recommendations to the full board, and appoint them, and then it would adjourn. And in fact, this was a defunct committee for several years that didn't actually even meet, and I have been trying, actually, for a long time to draw the focus of this board, that we spend so much time in a year on the budget, but the other thing that is so significant for this board is its capital infrastructure. We have 27 and 1/2 million square feet of capital infrastructure. It's something that amounts to something like five Pentagons. That is a massive amount of public facility space that really we sort of were perfunctory in our capital improvement plan review every year. We didn't spend a lot of time, staff reviewed it, it was presented, and I somewhat perennially was asking for some improvements in that because that's where children go to school every day, that's where employees go to work every day, other than our administrative facilities. This is a massive focus, I think, for this board on the going forward. You know, for about five years, the thing that's kept me up at night is how are we strategically planning for the future? When you have almost a billion-dollar backlog in renovations and expansions, when you have a million and a half square feet of infrastructure that's trailers that our children go to school in, that's an unacceptable situation for me, even before there were security risks before, that came to light with Parkland and other events. A child going to school in a brick-and-mortar classroom was significant. So, the work was last year to attempt to convert the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee to a more functional committee on a going-forward basis. And this past year, the members of this board plus one, the subset of members of this board plus one from the Fairfax City School Board wrestled with, how do we develop a charge going forward for comprehensive planning and development, and make recommendations to this board to spend more time on this, so that people feel comfortable that this board is spending its time wisely looking at facility, facility usage, program placement, et cetera. And so, over the course of this year, we met a number of times and looked at workloads, what wasn't being done, and what we have here is, okay, what does an ideal school look like? A community school, I would say, what does an ideal community school look like? What is the accessibility to programs? We have special education students, for example, if you have very overcrowded schools, very overcrowded classrooms, or supersized schools, there's no room for an imprint of a special education program. So, you may have an autistic child who needs to access special education program, but there's no physical space in a school that is their neighborhood school, so now we're transporting them more, to a more distant school, rather than one that's proximate to where they live. These are significant challenges. Integrated planning with the Board of Supervisors, how do we do that? Right now, we don't have a formal role, other than, you know, us talking to them at a joint school board and Board of Supervisor meeting, which didn't actually even happen before I was elected to the board. The people who were elected eight years ago, that was the first joint Board of Supervisor, School Board start, and is improving that relationship. But we don't have a formal way to address what is, you know, 60% of the public, public facilities or infrastructure in this county. So, we had to look at, how do you do integrated planning with them? And then with the county staff and the FCPS staff, and the types of services that are shared, and then the types of practices that are already operational, things that are our policies that we have authority over, what can we change? And then, looking at external opportunities, subject matter experts beyond Fairfax. We think a lot of ourselves sometimes, and that we've always done things a certain way, and that we're the 10th largest school system in the nation, and we know how to do things. Sometimes, other people know how to do things, too. And not just school systems, but commercial entities, cities, planning, and other things. There's a way that this board should be more intentional, and I think that the CPDC should be looking at that. So, if we can go to the next slide that is infographic, this is the first of two infographics. So, the workload is significant, and this is what took the members of CPDC this year a lot of time to wrangle, bringing forward something that would visually be able to communicate what we think the work of CPDC should be going forward. It's kind of clear for the Budget Chair and the Vice Chair what their work is, it's not so clear on the capital side. So, the first side is the, the left, that's in yellow, is operational. This is stuff that, above the dotted line is within our power. Capacity, boundaries, space utilization, program placement, transportation, trailer, split feeders, urban schools, the concept of urban schools, which our previous board built the first one in Bailey's Upper, which is the co-location in a commercial space, potentially, pre-K space, special education needs, education specifications, and then the discrete issues is just stuff that comes up. And then, what we're not currently doing, but what we think should be in our operational purview, is an annual board-agreed charge that comes, you know, from the board to CPDC. But also, we have people on this board who are liaisons to other areas of the county, like the, like Skipt and the schools, well, not as much the, well, could be the parks, but the Schools Committee, Sandy, is that correct? You're right, yeah, the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission, where we really have no voice, I mean, we kind of attend, but we don't have a vote. The second is integrated planning, which is a communication crossover. These are, this is kind of what we need to do more of, working with the Board of Supervisors and elevating the presence of the school board, building a better relationship with the Board of Supervisors in order to have that difficult conversation, that there's an inverse relationship in the funding of capital, capital spaces, making sure that there's a common language in our work on common renovation rating systems. It's very difficult to the school board to watch things like a new supervisor office be built while our children are going to schools in trailers, and we're not entirely sure what the prioritization is on their side. And where almost 190,000 children go to school every day, and where 28,000 employees go to work every day, is pretty significant, in our opinion. And that there does need to be a usage calculation on public spaces, if anybody's been to the, what's lovingly called the Taj Mahal, that, you know, people walk in, they do their county business, and they walk out, and all the lights go out at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, and if you go into any school, you know, you see practically every public space on a school being used on community use, and how intense that community use, what that does to the wear and tear on our facilities versus some less intensely-used public spaces on the county side. Things like equity and bonds, parity for schools and proffers. We're still not entirely clear about the whole proffer system, there's been a change in the law in proffers, but there does need to be parity between the county side and the schools in proffers. A discussion certainly on boundaries, which we're about to have. Pre-K and special education needs, because that funding is done in large part, or certainly in part by the county, on those spaces. Socioeconomic factors and resegregation were what some people wanted on this list. Community schools, shared services and spaces, things like wraparound services to certain areas of our community that are in need. The after-school childcare memo, I think I've been advocating this for seven years. We couldn't actually locate the memo, it's, I think, from the 1950s or 60s, but there are elementary schools throughout the county where a brick-and-mortar classroom is designated for sack space after school, and it's not that they don't get to use it, they kind of get to use it because this issue was forced with previous superintendents, but you can have a regular classroom of children going to school in a trailer out back while a brick-and-mortar classroom is sitting and not used as designated educational space during the academic day. I think that's a huge problem, and we need to address that with the county. A reassessment on current replacement value, and there is a, for people who are not aware, there's a need to pay and offset Fairfax City children who go to a Fairfax County school, and a Fairfax County children who go to a Fairfax City school, and there's like tuition and offsets, and whether that's an optimal way to do things. Then, on a comprehensive and strategic mindset, this is things that we could leverage on a going-forward basis, ways that we could improve the CIP, which includes, one of the things that we've talked about is adding administrative buildings into the CIP, improving the membership history by schools, so people can see how their individual schools were impacted by membership over time. They certainly know. Talk about pipelines and trends in the CIP, go get external subject matter experts, look at infrastructure financing outside the county, public-private partnerships, air rights, those kinds of things. Long-term strategic growth planning with the county and their comprehensive 25-year plan. We don't have a comprehensive 25-year plan, I think we should. Socioeconomic factors and resegregation appears again in this column. Inventory of all properties, all properties that FCPS owns, some of them have been turned back over to the county, but some of them are still within our purview, things that we need, that we don't have, like the West County property. Design needs on a going-forward basis, what the trends have shown with special education, for example, thoughts on career and technical education, what classrooms may look like on a going-forward basis, including wraparound services, all those kinds of things, and the potential new construction. And then, annual or quarterly recommendations, things that don't, we don't want to wait a year for, we think that there could potentially, as things come up, there could be intermittent recommendations by the board, making sure we get the big rocks done, and then there could be low-hanging fruit. If we go to the next, which is the visual infographic. So, this is just the school side. The school board as a whole is the 12. CPDC is a body of four, which are three school board members, plus the one city school board member. The Facilities and Planning Advisory Committee is a committee that represents the, or is appointed by the whole board, and then the relationship with the superintendent and staff. And then, if we could bring up the second one, which overlays the more full visual. So, if you think about, and you have to sort of look at these in conjunction, so these are color-coded of things that are currently operational, which are in yellow, the things that need better interface are in blue, which is predominantly with the Board of Supervisors, and improving our relationship with the Board of Supervisors to address those things. And the green is sort of the strategic moving forward. And so, we have to get to a common language and better communication with the Board of Supervisors, they need to work on their side, we need to work on our side, but right now, it is not cohesive and not working together. If you see where the Planning Commission is, which is a, these are appointed members by the Board of Supervisors, we didn't even have equal footing to a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. So, the intent, the overall intent is to elevate the role of this school board in conversations on this 27 and 1/2 million square feet of infrastructure, and look for ways to access information from both the county and external sources, and start to make much more strategic, improved conversations and suggestions to the full board, so that we can plan better. So, we're not solving, at this point, you know, we're solving, you know, problems from five years ago, and we need to stop being reactive, and rather be proactive, and move the conversation from, you know, solving yesterday's problem to working on, what are the problems five years out? Because capital-wise, if you're not solving problems five years out, you're already behind. So, I'm happy to take any questions.[1031.01][1031.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I know that your committee, all four of you, have been working really hard on coming together with these recommendations, and so I think that some of your recommendations, and really the lay of the land of showing where the disconnects continue to be, it's very helpful on this chart. I have a couple of people that would like to...
If I, if we could do the courtesy, because Ms. Evans and Ms. Darnett Kofax were the two other board members with me, if they have comments first, I think it would be, you know, courteous to let them comment first.
Sure, so we will have Ms. Evans. Ms. Darnett Kofax, do you have comments you would like to add?
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that, because I did just want to add on to what you said, so thank you for, Ms. Schultz, for that overview. Just wanted to make a couple of more points about where we are and how we got there. I did want to remind the board that CPDC did bring this to you before, brought it to the full board, to say, we think that this should be a more robust committee, and really take a hard look at our facilities issues, our capital issues, and the board did task us with doing this. So, the board has tasked us with doing this, and it's, you know, we did work very hard. I know this is a lot to absorb at one time. A little bit more history that I believe maybe Ms. Strauss and Mr. Moon may remember the time when we had a Facilities Committee. That was before my time on the board, and before most people's time on the board, and then we reconfigured some things. So, this would, I agree that it is important, because our facilities issues are so critical, that we do need a committee that can delve into some of these things in a greater way. For those who are in the audience, we do do the CIP every year, and we get that in December, we give it a month, we look at it, we debate it, we approve it, and as part of that, we do make improvements, but that doesn't, that one month between the time we see it and the time we approve it in January, we don't have the time really to go and delve into all of these issues. So, that is one thing that the committee hopes that we will be tasked with in the future, whether it's to look more deeply at things like the trailers issues, the modular issues, the many capacity issues that we have, you know, are we giving the information and getting all the data that we need to be making the very good decisions that we want to be making on all of our capacity issues? So, and certainly, all of this long list that we've come up with, they're all very critical issues, we will, of course, if the board approves, we'll have to prioritize them. We'll have to prioritize, and that, I believe, would be a next step for the committee, but we have so many, you know, the common language is critical, more bond funding is critical if we're going to be anywhere within our recommended time for renovation. So, thank you, Ms. Schultz, for putting committee members first, because I did want to give a little bit more background as opposed to having questions.
Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, yes, and it did take us a little time to figure out, you know, where all of these issues fit, and so many of them are overlapping. I think that's by the slide before this, the one integrated planning, where there's crossover required between FCPS, as well as outside of our, if you want to go to the slide, yes, right there. Number two, I think that is, you know, one thing, number one is kind of where we are and what we're looking at, number two is, you know, the hard work that has to be done. And I think, while there's prioritization in each one, that one is the one where we look at things and say, you know, where are we going to make our decisions as a board? How can we move forward when we do that? And, you know, because CPDC was a committee whose origination was just to get FPAC up and started, but it kind of persisted, and many board members thought that this was something that could, we could take on a greater role, and that's why we continue to exist, and when the greater board thought that we should do that. So, I think in this case, and because of time tonight, I think perhaps, Madam Chair, if we can, you know, have a little more time to absorb this, and then move forward, because I think the prioritization is what's going to take some time for the fuller board to understand and prioritize as to what the configuration and the agenda of CPDC should look like next year.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, and I appreciate this, Ms. Schultz. I would like to go back to the next slide, I want to just make a comment, because, no, there was a chart that was on initially, yeah, no, no, yeah, this one, this one, okay. So, I really appreciate the work that the committee has done, and I know that this is going to help us to have informed discussions as to how we use our facilities, but this is a picture in my mind of One Fairfax. That's what that is. That is absolutely how we integrate what we do as a school board with everybody else in the county. That's what One Fairfax is about. And so, we've got, we obviously, we've had a little too much siloing going on prior to now. We've, I've previously been on the Planning Commission, so I know how important some of these comments are. I know how difficult it is, but that Planning Commission is making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, the Schools Committee, our folks have come over, and, from the board, and participated with the Planning Commission to give input with respect to recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. Now, that's not elected to elected, so I can certainly understand your comment, but those discussions need to happen, and that's why I say this looks like One Fairfax to me. Because we can't improve until, first of all, we do what you have done, and we identify where the deficits are, right? And then, we begin to integrate in a greater way, not just operating with who we are, because we're all connected, and we can make better decisions when, for example, the Board of Supervisors understands what we are dealing with and what the problems are. And so, I wanted to thank you for giving us that illustration, because truly, we can't get to where we're trying to get, we can't get to where we're trying to get if we don't address that. The other thing is the list that was before this, I'll just quickly comment on that one. Again, those things that you're listing, particularly under number two, elevated presence of the school board and decision-making progress, process, that's with, that's with the Board of Supervisors, that's One Fairfax. Communication, you have it here, communication with the Board of Supervisors, developing common language so we understand one another. Equity and bonds, all of those things are One Fairfax. And so, I know I've received a great deal of mail about people with negative comments about One Fairfax, but I wanted to point out that this is what it's truly about, in my opinion, and I thank you for elevating this to the point where we can see where the rubber meets the road, and how that process, not having that overall view, truly is already hurting us.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Schultz, please.
Yeah, I just want to, I just, if, so you see what's on the left-hand side below the dotted line, that, what you referenced earlier about being a member of the Planning Commission, or being a member of this board as a representative, or as a liaison to the Schools Committee, which is below, it's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, the problem is, is that that one person would go and talk to the subcommittee of the Planning Commission, of the Board of Supervisors, and that's reverse engineering the way the conversation should be, and there was no direction to that liaison. That's what we need to change. Now, you say One Fairfax, I say it's enhanced communication, it's two different interpretations of what's here, I understand that, but the intent, this is actually one of the most crucial parts, is how are we going to change the relationship? Could you go to the last slide, please?
I'm absolutely agreeing with you, Ms. Schultz.
Right, is that, there was no, I mean, we were coming in from underneath, and it was only one or two people, and that's, that is what fundamentally, structurally has to change, and was very difficult, I really, I mean, I will say, the four of us worked very hard in collaboration with members of FPAC and staff, to be able to take, you know, 27 and 1/2 million square feet and say, okay, what's the future look like, and how are we going to fix it, and try to make this visual for people? This is very difficult, and I really want to thank my fellow CPDC members.
And I appreciate that, and the integration and the progress you're trying to achieve, I believe falls under that umbrella of One Fairfax. Thank you so much for that work.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Schultz, I mean, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, thank you very much, my colleagues who put this together, yes, years ago, we did have a Facilities Committee, and considering the work that needs to be done, FPAC talked about major maintenance, about overcrowding, about trailers, and all the rest of that, clearly there is, more work needs to be done going forward. And I guess I am seeing this committee as sort of returning to what we had before, which was a Facilities Committee, considering the amount of work that needs to be done. I do agree that it is joint planning as a county. Clearly, a lot of decisions have been made to enhance economic development in the county, and I think that's great, but it does mean that we have a lot of catch-up to do in order to provide the needed services that enable us to have high-quality schools, high student achievement, and the resources that all of our children need. So, thank you for the work. I guess I'm not exactly sure what the next steps are for this.
I think there are some questions regarding it, and go to the next, go to the next meeting. This, we won't make a decision on this, we'll put it on the agenda for a decision at a works, at a board meeting. Having said that, I do have Ms. Paochek, and then I do want to make, ask Ms. Schultz a couple of questions.
Agreed with my colleagues, also have a couple of questions, I think, along the lines of what was shared, and I appreciate that you've divided it into the three columns, and definitely it sounds like we need prioritization. So, A, I'm wondering, I know we were able to move forward, and while, you know, there's no perfect, we've gotten to a better place in our joint budget planning, and the cycle that that goes through, and that staff is going through, so it seems to me that here, in the, in the part two, in the integrated planning, there's kind of, there's all the different areas and the priorities for that, A, but B, kind of starting to think about a joint process, right? A process that would be helpful as two boards, and two separately-elected boards, to be able to do this work together. to do this work together. So to me, it seems like that might be an important next step, and having, you know, the board leaderships, but also finding a way for, you know, the superintendent and the county executive to be able to start to delve into that work together. And then the other one, going into just, I guess, I don't know if we're going to more specifics as to what is in the two table, three tables today, or if there will be further discussion, or if we want some feedback. I mean, there's a lot here. Okay.
I would suggest, if you can provide any feedback, I think that would be good right now, if you could do that.
Okay, perfect. So a lot on here, and just...
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, to answer the question, and I'm going to look to Ms. Schultz, but I believe what we're looking for is, is for consensus of the board, that this is indeed the direction that we want to go in.
Right. I don't, I don't believe this, we need to take this and put this on another agenda. We've already voted to do this. This is just our materialization. This is a year's worth of work. We just want the consensus of the board that this is our recommendation on how CPDC should work going forward. So you either take the recommendation and agree with it, or you don't. But I don't need, think we need to kludge up our agendas anymore and spend more time on it. We've spent a year, and if there's something fundamentally wrong that you don't like about this, you know, we're happy to change something.
Ms. Schultz, I very much appreciate you bringing all of this to the board. The original ask of CPDC was for you all to come back to us with a charge that the whole board would approve. And this is a bit more than a charge. It is incredibly comprehensive, detailed work that has a number of individual line items that people haven't seen until this week, or even today in some cases. And so I think we have to be respectful of the board's ability to actually go through this and better understand it. Now, having said that, that's not saying that we won't do that. I think it's important to give this board the opportunity to do that. There are also some questions as far as some of the other ask you might have on here, which are important. And I don't want to take Ms. Palchuk's time. I will ask those questions when it's my turn, okay?
No, I appreciate that clarity. Thank you. And so, yes, I think it's wonderful to see this here, to, you know, I absolutely support this committee, and I understand there may have been a different kind of committee in the past. I think it's critical that we have this, and also that we find a way to advocate and work toward having it truly One Fairfax communication, however we want to call it. Without, you know, integrating with what's happening, what's being developed in the county, it will be difficult to do this in isolation, right? So the process of how we want to do that, I don't think now's the time to go into specifics. I think you have a lot here, and that maybe is, you know, more for future work and with the county, but, you know, happy to provide that later. So thank you so much for your work, and absolutely support a charge for this committee.
I don't have any of the other board members indicating they want to speak, so if I can just offer my comments. I think this is, is excellent work. I fully support having an enhanced CPDC. I think it's important to do that. I do have a couple of questions tonight, which is, are you suggesting that it might be useful in the way that we have board members who are part of the schools committee, would you, and we have appointees from our community that are appointed by the board on the civilian review panel? We have the joint activity on the Joint Environmental Task Force. Are you suggesting that we might want to ask the board of supervisors to appoint someone to our CPDC? Or are you suggesting that we would have, at a minimum, an annual joint meeting between the two boards? That would be a comprehensive planning meeting that would build on the work that the CPDC is doing, so that you all would be the strategic engine for it, but that we would have a joint initiative between the two boards, perhaps in advance of adopting the CIP, so that we can have a greater collaboration, not only on our buildings, but I think that we should be looking at it in other areas as well. Physical structures, our transportation, and things?
I mean, certainly, you know, we would be willing to consider anything that the board would like to add to that in aggregate. I don't know that an annual meeting actually solves it. I don't know that we actually solve anything when we have joint meetings with the board of supervisors. We discuss things, but we don't solve things. I think work happens behind the scenes, and this is actually the infrastructure of doing work on a regular basis, as opposed to one annual meeting, which is exactly the situation we're in now, which is, we have one report to the board, and we actually don't do work on a going basis. And so the goal is to establish this as the framework with what's in the bottom-left-hand corner as primary, which is, we decide as a board what the charge is, and then the work of the committee begins, and we go to work every month around the year instead of one annual meeting.
So a couple of things. What specifically are you suggesting would be the charge for the next calendar year? And then the second piece, and I will push back a little about the behind-the-scenes work, because that is precisely my concern. I think that our public deserves transparency and open communications in the same way that we publish what we are discussing in advance, and what the priorities are, and we publish our, any presentations, then obviously, we would want to make sure that this would be a transparent...
Well, CPDC meetings, CPDC meetings are open.
Correct, yes.
So those could be attended by members of the public at any time, and we have published agendas. So there's no anticipation that, and when I say behind the scenes, I mean the work of the committee that happens on a regular, on a regular basis. And if this is the infrastructure that is approved by this board, if this, this is what we took a very long time to get to, because it is a very big problem, when you talk about 196 schools and, and all of the administrative facilities, all of this strategic planning hasn't been happening by the board, so it took us a long time to get to here. I would anticipate that the next meeting of CPDC, we're now ready, we would now be ready to work on bringing an annual charge back to the board.
Great, because that's precisely what we hoped would happen this year, is that you were going to work on bringing as a charge, and that's the decision point. So when are you intending to bring a charge to this group?
As soon as you can make room for me on the next work session.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. So I think, I think Ms. Keys-Gamarra laid it out very well, and I would like to thank Ms. Schultz for giving us the best justification for the One Fairfax initiative that we could have ever asked for. And I do want to draw our attention to column number two, where the proposal you have brought us refers to important issues like pre-K, socioeconomic factors, and resegregation, community schools, and so on. I do think this is very important work, so thank you again to Ms. Schultz and the committee for this. I do believe that Ms. Corbett Sanders is absolutely correct. We actually never authorized as a board the push for a facilities committee. And if we look at the history of CPDC back in 2009, 2010, and referring to page 42 of the Governance Manual, the CPDC was established for one purpose, which was to first create FPAC and then evaluate FPAC. Nothing beyond that. So as far as I'm concerned, the board actually has never authorized anything up here as great as it is. What we did ask was for a proposal, so I joined Ms. Corbett Sanders in asking for simply a charge. Because I do think what we see up here tonight is a bit too much for me to digest. I think it's too much for the community to digest, and so I would not support this at this time. And so I do believe that, perhaps most importantly, the issue with creating a facilities committee is that you're taking issues that the whole board needs to be engaged in, and relegating them to a committee, and I think that's what this board has seen in the past. So again, I am very supportive of everything that's been laid out here with respect to One Fairfax and the values that have been presented, but I don't think I could support this at this time.
So with that, I don't think we have an action item tonight. What we will do is we will put on a board meeting, a work session in September, for you to, for the CPDC to come back with a charge based on what you've laid out here, because I don't think that there's any disagreement around this table, that the work you all are doing is very important and that we support it. It's coming back with what is going to be the focus for the next year. And if you can bring that back to us in, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans? If you can bring that, if you can bring that back to us, we will put it on the agenda in the very beginning of September, because I think you have the support, which we gave you several months ago, for the continued work of CPDC in a more enhanced manner. And so this is really just giving the board a better understanding of what the focus is going to be over the next year with your committee. Ms. Evans?
So I did want to take a step back here, because I think we considered our charge to take a look at the types of things that CPDC would be asked to look at. And so that was what we did, we spent the last year on. And so I think we expected to come out of here tonight with a sense that, yes, you have captured the types of things that CPDC should be looking at. I fully support coming back with a charge, a very specific charge, because, as I said, we have to prioritize. You know, there's just too much there. So we, you know, CPDC can go back, and we haven't got our new committee, so I don't know if I'll be on it again, but we do need to prioritize and bring back a very specific idea. But I do think that those of us who are on the committee would like to get a sense from the board if the work that we have done is indeed, you know, the things that we have listed, are these the things that the board wants CPDC working on?
I couldn't say it better.
I think everybody around the table showed general support for you to continue working in this, on this. We just want to know what your number-one priority is for the next year. What is the...
As long as we have consensus that we'll develop a charge and bring it back to the board, and this is the framework under which we're going to do it, that's all we're asking for. It's kind of simple.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have good news. We have an audio feed for the cafeteria, and so we will go ahead on with item number two on our agenda. And those people who are in the hall, who cannot hear us easily, please take advantage of the audio feed in the cafeteria.
Madam Chair, could I...
Yes, we will wait until they get there.
You know, Madam Chair, could I ask a quick question about, you know, what I understand is, all these committees will be reconstituted at the upcoming meeting?
Yes, sir.
So as of this point, I do not know who's going to be the members of this committee, who's going to chair all of our committees.
That's correct. Yes, sir. We will, we are having some conversations.
Just wasn't sure whether I should make any assumption that, you know, existing members remain as members of the committees they are assigned currently. All right, thank you.
Yeah. And so we're going to take a...